Like we have other stuff. Well, they're working on that. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good morning. And if you would stand and join us for the pledge, please. Commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first thing on our agenda this morning is a consent agenda as the minutes from six twenty twenty-three. Approving payroll, approving and allow the chair to sign the lease for the public defender's office and approve and sign one-way opioid settlement agreement letter. Being sent out to the mayors. Go through the board.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? You want to post? Ever motion passes? We have a minute or two before the public hearing on. The appeal of River Rivers Bridge subdivision MS seventy-four road. Situation.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll try to be as brief as I can. As you know, at the last appeal hearing that was continued. There was a request by the commissioners for some additional traffic data. As well as some survey data. So I'll present the traffic information. And then Rusty Blau can tell you what he was able to reflect on the survey. So first of all, what we did. So we we put out the traffic counters on a Friday morning, June ninth. And we retrieved them on the twenty-third, that's the morning of the twenty-third. Total was about thirteen point eight days of data. We typically set them out for a week. So I think we've got plenty of plenty of good data. Might kind of remember these names. Corbett one is a traffic counter location. Corbett two. Right before the Rivers Ridge intersection was a traffic counter location. River one is for the traffic data we collected back in May. So it was not set this time, but I just put it there for reference. And then Rivers Ridge was about right here in the middle of Rivers Ridge. Corbett three. We wanted to get an idea past that intersection of traffic going down to New Orleans and Ole Miss down here and. And of course, the Corbett Dam issue. We did put another traffic counter down here where it comes into the parking lot for Corbett Dam just for. Information as well. So if you get those memorized, I'll present what we came up with. So this is typically what we get from our traffic count information. This was a typical day and this is at Corbett one. So this is over by the state highway. This was on a Saturday, June tenth. And as you can see, it picks up and logs the volume for each hour. You can see the peak for that day was around eleven AM, eight vehicles in that hour. We get average speed for that information. We get. You know how far apart cars are, cars versus trucks. So it's really some pretty good information. We use this information also percentage speed limits. So usually when you can see that eighty-fifth percentile of those of the speeds that you get for the whole study, that's how we set that. So again, this is the things that it collects, type of vehicle, cars, trucks. Let's see. This is then, if you take that for every station and every day during the study. You get a grand total. This is a grand total for the Corbett. Station. So this would have been all thirteen point whatever days that was. And the important information we're looking for is over here. The average daily traffic over by the highway on Corbett, sixty-four vehicles per day. And that would be over the course of the study periods. And then you see there, there's that eighty-fifth percentile. So if it was me. We would set that speed limit on Corbett Road around twenty-nine an hour based on that eighty-fifth percentile. Study. I don't think there's really anything else. You do get a top speed. So somebody was flying through there. So anyways, good information. We have that for every station. This is a summary then of all the data. Again, this is each of the days. I didn't put up there the Friday. And the Friday morning and the Friday morning, even though it is in the. The ADT report because what it does, it takes the hours, the total number of hours. And then takes that hourly times times what you got in that hour. It's our averages of per hour. So that actually is more accurate, but I did. Because I know Mr. Doherty puts something in his or has a discussion on using just the whole base. So that's what this is. So there's the difference. If you just took the whole day, Saturday through Thursday, that's what these numbers are, but they're pretty close together. But this, this is numbers we would use because it's that hour to that hour. That was the start of the study to the end of the study. Some other things to pay attention to. So yeah, your average daily traffic that we would report would be twenty-three for Rivers Ridge Road. Sixty-four for Corbett one over at the highway. Corbett two right before Rivers Ridge Road, forty-nine. Corbett three past the Rivers Ridge intersection, twenty-seven, and then the parking lot four. You can see, just looking at some of the anomalies. I know that we had washouts on. The two E, two A D at the Willwood area. On the eleventh and the twenty-first, I believe it was. And I've got that written, yeah, I've got that written somewhere. But anyway, then there were others too. So there was quite a bit of weather during this period. This could have been people coming in to fix things in the in the damn area because that was high that day. Other things to pay attention of is ballpark, you would think that in theory, Corbett three plus Rivers Ridge. Plus the traffic coming out of Mr. Doherty's driveway should be close to the the traffic from Corbett two in theory. But it's not perfect because we didn't have the traffic coming out of this driveway. So anytime there's a little negative, that's probably what we miss there. Other things that could cause the negative is, and I know I've done this before, as you go to the end of Corbett. At the Rivers Ridge intersection and you turn around to that. And so that that's probably explains a lot of some of the negatives. The positives are strange, bit anomalies. What that's saying is there was more traffic. On Rivers Ridge and. Corbett. I'm sorry, Rivers Ridge. And. Corbett three. Then then Corbett number two, which is kind of odd. And I think what a lot of that you'll see is there's some pretty big numbers that are on Rivers Ridge that they're kind of dropping and add. And I think when we went back and looked at this, and while we moved the counters, Mr. Doherty does use that road quite a bit for his personal use for ag. And whatnot. So I suspect that's what some of that is. You can see the pretty big differences in those data. Like in this particular case, you see how high that was on a Saturday on Rivers Ridge compared to. Even the others, you know, these others were below an average, well below average, and this is well above average. So I suspect that's what those data are telling us. So we do try to look for anomalies in the data. That's really hard to see, but hopefully makes sense that the top is. The plotted data of Corbett one, the gray there is Corbett. Two. So that's right before the Rivers Ridge intersection. Yellow's right before or right after the Corbett intersection on Corbett. Blue is Rivers Ridge. And again, you can see those anomalies. Compared to some of the other data, how they how spikes like that. And then this, of course, is the over by the dam. Okay, this someone with a lot of detail. There was a discussion about the back door, whether or not we're getting traffic sneaking out of that. South side from the proposed subdivision. And that would underestimate the traffic on Rivers Ridge Road. And I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mr. Doherty. He shared his. Camera, his trail cam information. And it really was about four vehicles that you can see regularly, a red car, a white car, a UPS truck and FedEx truck. That's all I could see from the photos he provided. I plotted those there based on the date stamps. And this is just a piece of the data. But if you looked at that for the whole period. What that shows is I counted twenty-one. What I call alleged backdoor trips over thirteen point seven nine days adds to about one point five two. Vehicles per day. So you could probably add that if you wanted to, just to be conservative to the twenty-three vehicles a day. Little discussion on the weather. It has been a strange view for sure. A lot cooler, a lot of wet. I did pull up the data from the. From the airport, which is kind of strange or interesting there is this. Just like we all know in Park County, the weather can be drastically different just a few miles away because. Where we had our worst washouts, where that water was over, Willwood was on the twelfth and the twenty-first. And you can see. That they had the most rain here on the eleventh. So like I say, that was a really localized tone strangle that went through there and it happened twice that I know of. And anyway, so it was a weird year. I would say that if anything, that probably. Slightly impacted the Corbett Dam information, no cooler and and rain. Some have said that maybe that the road was impassable. I went there right after the washout in my truck and was able to get through. So I'll just say that. But the thing to keep in mind is we're dealing with averages and not peaks. When you're talking average daily traffic, which is the study, you know, this is a snapshot in time. And you got to remember weather and weather is. Pretty significant. And you take January data, February data, December data. Probably going to be well below some of this. But then you take, you know, July, it's probably going to be higher. But over the course of the year, we found that that's a pretty good. Representation of the snapshot. So I don't, I wouldn't have anticipated the average over a year being drastically different than this. I would say there's probably times when Corbett one. It's because you saw there's a high there. There was ninety, there was an eighty-six. I'm sure there are times when it goes over a hundred. But the average daily traffic. I don't think it really works. So in summary, conclusions, the. For Rivers Ridge Road, we think again, if you include the backdoor information between twenty and twenty-five vehicles per day. This is where we come up with as an ADT. And the study confirmed that Corbett Road is between sixty-five and seventy at the west end of the highway. Before the Rivers Ridge, say between forty-five and fifty-five, just before the intersection. And then pass the intersection between twenty-five and thirty-five after the Rivers Ridge. Again, just this was good data, so I don't want to throw it out. The May. Study data was twenty-one for Rivers Ridge. So again, it's just another snapshot in time compared to the twenty-three that we computed this. So it's right in where I thought it would be, honestly. These are the two points I hope you key on the most is all this traffic stuff is it's important, it's interesting, but this is the deal right here. The proposed subdivision is not expected to significantly increase traffic on either road compared to pre-subdivision conditions. And the proposed subdivision will not cause a change in the classification of either road. That's the basis for our rules. That's the basis for the. Administrative relief of weather budgets. So again, you're dealing with the width of the roadway and the width of the easement. Those were the administrative relief issues. I would think that you could either uphold. My decision, you could overturn my decision, or you could do either with some conditions. And that's, I'll leave it at that. I also just put up here for Rusty. This, if he wants to discuss the survey, I don't know if he's got. If that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Rusty, did you want to add anything? I know you provided us with the survey. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I would ask for a public comment. Mr. Doherty.
I will be as brief as possible.
Two to three minutes.
Okay, let's just. I'm going to have to switch over to this computer.
Okay.
We are the source on this. Who's?
Brian can help you right behind you.
I'm not sure. You moved it over. So what did you want to do?
I didn't touch yours, sir.
No, I understand. It's the source. I'm only going to talk about Rivers Ridge and Corbett Road three. Okay, we know. That down at the parking lot has been washed out, even though fishing game came out and tried. This is the third time that it has been. Bladed or repaired this year, but it's still washed out largely impassable. I have this one here, but this is. So my points and a lot of the information that we are reviewing. Mr. Edwards and I agree on. Okay, it is more appropriate. Okay, so this was exactly what he's showing you. What? The lower part was washed out. This is a picture of what the lower part looks now. It's largely impassable unless you've got a UTV or something going over there. I'm only going to focus on River Road, Corbett Road number three and Rivers Ridge. We were trying to look at what was the impact of the back door. Where there is no easement that crosses over private property. Okay, that's what's part of the issue last time. We installed two cameras on Corbett three overlooking where the counter was and the full view of Rivers Ridge. Days after the board meeting, before the counters went on, these same red cars and white cars. And these are where private property indicates where they're going over someone else's property without permission. This is they came in one way, out the other. During the traffic study, the same two red cars, white cars going back and forth, crossing over private property. Private property. Over and over and over again, the back door, using the back door. Coming back and forth, it just happens over and over again. FedEx, UPS also doing the same thing, going down Rivers Ridge, coming out Corbett Road or vice versa, again, using the back door. Happens so often. After the traffic study, it continues. These are the counts that are depressed. These counts are depressed because of this backdoor activity. They're not accurate because of the back door. You talked about the weather. The weather really is dependent. This is the inches in rainfall, same as National Weather Service. Where you see the higher the rainfall, the lower the count. Well, it's agricultural. This is Corbett Road number three. These numbers are inflated. Because of the backdoor activity. Right? If you see, when you combine them. This one says twenty-eight, this one's twenty-four. They're close, but one is inflated, one is deplated. The applicants have suggested that Corbett Road can fit two trucks. But that Rivers Ridge cannot. When we are working on the road and someone has to come by. We have to get off the road to let them go by. You don't have to do that on Corbett Road where you can pass. Even the public works truck. That went down to install the counters. Had to back out. Of the road. You can't turn around. It's a single lane road. At the beginning. The engineer was asked if they propose applicants. Option one or two on their breakup, will you require road improvements and widening? And the answer was yes. We think the old, the road dimensions for Rivers Ridge should be at least the same as Corbett Road. So some widening may be needed. Rusty was going to get some width and compare with Corbett. This past weekend, the applicants finally made repairs to the surface of Rivers Ridge, but surface is not the issue. It's width. Applicants continue to operate with that faith. Proper traffic count is impacted by that back door. The average of Rivers Ridge and Corbett three are virtually the same. Single lane width would not be approved. If you're starting a new division today. You wouldn't approve a single lane road because it's below county standards. The traffic study shows ADT is too high for a single grid road. Applicants think to file with the management request and there is broad neighborhood opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for. For our engineer. The backdoor road is basically a civil issue, correct? That is not anything that is being dealt with in this situation because that's not anything that we have any.
That's my opinion. And like I say, I figure that amounts to about one and a half vehicles per day during our study. I think others could probably explain how many trips they take per day. But yeah, in my opinion, that's between the landowners that is. Allegedly be a trans. In trespass on. That to me is outside of this.
Okay, are there other public comments on? Yes, if you'd identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Kendrick Harvey. And my brother sent all of you an email. Reviewing what Mr. Doherty did. And most of what I had to say was probably repeating that. You've read that email.
I believe we all received it.
I will say something about. The back door. My mother, which is the red car, eighty-two, and she doesn't know what to remember. That she's not supposed to go that way. Aaron, which is the white car, had. Surgery for a tumor the day after the hearing in May. And she's had a lot of follow-up care since then. And she's not necessarily thinking about when she has to go to her doctor's department. Which way she's supposed to go to get out. I think my brother in the email that we sent you. Covered pretty much everything else that I had to say about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the appeal? Keep in mind that this is not about the subdivision. This is about the road appeal. The subdivision still has to come. Through the normal subdivision process and will still come in front of the county commissioners at some point. This just has to do with the appeal on the road. If you would, yes, and if you would identify yourself, we just, we have to use the mic for the people that might be listening.
My name's Ted Harvey. I live at thirty-two River Ridge Road. I would just like to point out a couple of other points about. Mr. Doherty's points on River Ridge Road. Number one, he said that you you can't pass on River Ridge Road, but you can on Corbett Road. Any vehicles that are going on River Ridge Road are on a thirty-foot wide easement. The road itself doesn't, it maybe gets to. Within. In some places, five feet of the north edge of that easement. To stay within the easement. There is no doubt in my mind that vehicles can pass on that road. They may not be on the gravel surface. But they are most definitely. Completely within the access easement. Secondly. In terms of the back door, the only other thing that I would add to that is. If UPS or FedEx is coming to my house. To drop something off and then goes to Cynthia's house to drop something off, then goes down to the Linux to drop something off. And comes back out and heads out Corbett Road. They are completely within the rights of the easements going that way. If they don't go down to the Linux, they most definitely are. Not within the rights of the easements to go out the back door of Cynthia's property. Until they get to the intersection of Corbett and Red Ridge Road. So we're not disputing the fact that there is some traffic that's going. Where technically they don't have legal access to go. We are disputing that that adds very much to. The traffic counts overall. If any of those vehicles. Come in River Ridge Road and go out. Mr. Doherty's back door. They're still counted by three of those traffic counters. The idea that. We want to, is suggested that River Ridge road numbers are the same as Corbett Road numbers in my mind. Is a little ridiculous because that would mean that. Every other user of Corbett Road that doesn't live on River Ridge Road. Is not using the road at all. So the idea that the numbers are the same is just simply not true. There is tons of traffic on Corbett Road that does not exist on River Ridge Road. That's all I got unless you guys have any questions for me.
Anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing? In this appeal. Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing? Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? You want to post? Motion passes to close the public hearing. Go through the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And this is either for Brian or for Rusty. The actual easement right now over Rivers Ridge Road is is thirty feet. That's the stated recorded easement.
Another point of clarification on. The ability for the appeal. You look at average daily traffic. Which? The limit that you're dealing with is under a hundred. What? What is the?
Yeah, because really that's why I emphasize the bullet. If a development's been a result of a change to classification of roadway, that next classification is under vehicles. And I guess it's worth noting that. Either road meets the width or easement standard for the current classification, which is the local access road. That's where we give subdivision classification about thresholds. That's where you start talking paid roads and you start getting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It's the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I just move that we uphold the engineer's recommendations for the. Administrative. Administrative.
I second that.
Been moved and seconded to uphold the administrative relief granted by. County engineer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Resolution number. Thank you. Okay. Not that I'm wrong. Thirty-six. She need to get taller.
Forget better.
When we get started, Jeff, I. Put those radios back down in the ELC.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good man. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. So the next thing on our agenda is Homeland Security Director Jeff Martin, an update on the. Vigilant guard training event. Which I understand went very well.
It did. And very happy to say that we had planned for a number of contingencies in case things didn't go the way we anticipated and we didn't have to execute any of them. I think that's the first time. That I can think of, I've been involved in a training on the planning side where we didn't have to execute a contingency because something didn't go right. Somebody didn't show up or something else happened. So very pleased the planning team. I mean. Amazing from all across the basin, including our state partners. They did a great job in coming up and helping us, giving us the resources we need to make the same really, really. Really realistic. And I think a testament to that is. FEMA Region Eight planning team, their exercise team came up to observe ours and they said it was one of the most realistic trainings they'd ever been a part of. So I thought that was really cool for the planning team. To be able to take that away and provide that for our responders that. Honestly, we may never see that again. So I think that was a cool thing. Just some quick numbers. Like I said, everything went down pretty much like we anticipated. We had to start late. Because we had some late guard arrivals and our VIPs were a tad behind, but it really didn't. it really didn't impact our exercise the way we thought it might based on the air support coming in. We were able to coordinate all that and I thought that was uh was really good considering we had multiple agencies with multiple different air assets coming in all at the same time. Coordinating that was um done pretty well. We were able to run twenty-four law enforcement officers through the scenario multiple times. So a lot of those officers got multiple run-throughs with those scenarios. And as those scenarios grew in the morning, we were able to add more and more victims. We were able to get our EMS in there and integrate them with that. So that was kind of the goal. Was that mesh point between law enforcement and EMS, making sure that they understand who's doing what and what's expected of them. And some of the feedback was from our law enforcement side was that that was really good. I, I don't think that's really been done before. We're, we're out there with our EMS and, and figuring out how this is going to work if we ever had a mass casualty event. So I think getting them together and running it through multiple times and then going and debriefing and talking about this worked, this didn't work, I think was really good. So having that morning period from let's see, what was it? Nine o'clock to eleven o'clock or eight to eleven really allowed a lot of our personnel to run through that thing multiple times and get an understanding of what's expected during this. So that was good. So we had twenty-four law enforcement from the county. And then um eighteen EMS personnel, which is huge. So that was Powell Valley and Cody Regional getting them together. Uh, one of the comments from one of the V I Ps was a mayor of one of our bigger cities in the state was how do they have that many ambulances? Do we have that many ambulances? And I think that's really good considering, you know, the they're still busy. It's summertime and to be able to bring that many ambulances out and that many personnel out for a training of this magnitude, I think really shows how committed everybody was behind it. So very happy to um have had, what is that? Forty-two of our local responders out and running through this drill multiple times. I think that was fantastic. Um. The guard did a great job putting together our actors to show up and paying our actors, paying local actors to come out and get moulages up. And they did a great job. I, I, I didn't hear this firsthand. Um, Chief Coker told me that somebody actually called in a report of a victim, like a real life victim. The moulage was so good. Um, they did a great job and looking at the saying in the, in the initial debrief we had after, a lot of the comments were, it was just chaotic. And I think that was kind of the point was to make it chaotic so that when heaven forbid something like this does happen, we've seen it before. Um, but I, I, I thought we did a great job. I thought the planning team was amazing and our responders on the ground were incredible. So if there was anything that, that lacked, it would be on the planning side and that falls, you know, on my shoulders and we'll fix that and move on. But um thirty-four organizations from our last count from the state, federal and local resources. So when you think about that and you think about the opportunities and really the relatively low cost to the county and our local resources, I thought this thing was um fantastic. The things that our responders wanted to work on that were identified in the first planning meeting were communications with so many agencies coming together. How do we talk? How do we organize this? Um, still have some things to work on because there is a lot of agencies coming on their own radio channels and Y O Link and conventional. It was, it was there were some challenges there, but the individuals on the ground, our responders on the ground, like they made it work. They talked to each other. They communicated verbally and they let everybody know what they were doing. And so I think, you know, despite the fact that there were so many channels coming together, the actual response on the ground was tremendous. Um. So there are things to work on. Been working on that with Monty. Um, I appreciate Park County Sheriff providing a dispatch, their dispatch center for us to run the communications and run that dispatch portion of it. The second thing we identified early on was we really wanted to work on that on-scene I C S command structure. How fast can we spin that up? I think the it's really easy to coordinate your own units. You know, if I'm the person in charge on the ground, I can coordinate my people coming in, but it's when the guard comes in, it's when fire and EMS and everybody else comes in, it's really spinning that up as fast as we can and getting those branches built off so we can effectively uh coordinate that response. So we're not working on parallel things and, and wasting time. We're trying to save lives. So there's, there's things we're going to work on on that as well. But again, on the, on the ground at that level, I thought it went really, really good. And the feedback from each individual agency was we need to work on I C S, but at the ground level, our responders did a fantastic job. So that was really good. Um, in terms of the exercise, something we didn't anticipate that, you know, I think we've been talking about for a little bit um at the sheriff's office too, was some kind of a county I D card for county employees. So everybody's nodding. So this isn't the first.
Came up this morning.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And that was just because we had people showing up who wanted to be a part of this and didn't have the proper credentialing. And it's something that I know I've been, been talking to Charlie at the sheriff's office about and maybe you know, working towards that end goal, all county employees having the same type of card that can be identifiable wherever you're at. So that was one of the things that came up. We did not expect, but it was pleasant to hear that, okay, this is an issue. So let's just take it on and address it. So we'll, I'm sure we'll be talking about that later, but. Um. Yeah, um, I just really appreciate everybody's support from the board across the basin, across the state. Uh, we had everything we needed, we got. And like I said, the overall cost to the county was, was extremely, extremely small considering the scale of this thing. So um. I think looking back, we may not be able to do something of this size probably ever again. But if we can take those lessons and apply them forward and still continue fostering those relationships with our partners, it's a good thing. And I, I think the big takeaway was the relationships that were built. Like I get C C'd on a bunch of emails from one of our local agencies to a federal or a state agency that never had that contact. Well, now they do. And we know what they're capable of and we know how to get ahold of them. So I think overall massive win. Um, I don't have all the A A Rs in, don't have them all done. I'm expecting maybe the next week or two, we'll have them in and then we'll have a big maybe an L E P C. We'll talk about the A A R and go over that whole thing and, and figure out what we need to do to report, but um. Overall, I, I really haven't heard any negative feedback. So I think that's a, a good sign.
The only thing that I heard was, was the I D situation from the county coroner that he, he went to attend and wouldn't let him in for a little while because they didn't know who he was. And I understand that, but so, yeah, the I D thing is pretty important.
Madam Chair, I was on the other end of it where the National Guard was actually the ones that were letting people through and they just waved me through and I was.
Yeah, and I think that was one of those.
They know you.
But uh, did, did you also get uh reports from the hospital that I know that you weren't on site there? Um, but they were dealing with uh their own training and emergencies.
Yes, I know the hospitals. I know they were very busy. There was a lot going on that morning too. They actually, and, and this is the testament to like how all in people were in the county where they, they devised and kind of set up their own scenario, even though their scenario was connected to our scenario. And we had patients on scene, so we didn't have to worry about transport. We didn't want to have to deal with people on the streets, especially our victims on the streets. But um, the initial feedback was that it went really good. We had the eighty-four C S T from Wyoming's out there helping them through the decon procedure. So on that end, um, I haven't gotten feedback from the hospital. We're still waiting their A A Rs, but the initial verbal feedback I got was that they, I mean, obviously I've seen their posts on Facebook. Like I, I think it went really good for them to, hopefully what they wanted out of it. But that's something where the complexity of this thing was so massive that, you know, it was broken up and it, it, it just I thought it went really, really good considering the number of moving pieces with the hospitals and with the National Guard and with their resources and everybody getting these together on a timing issue. And like I said, most if there's going to be an issue, it's going to be an, an, an issue on the planning side. And like I said, I'll, I'll take that and we'll, we'll figure out how to make that better next time. But I think everybody individually as an agency and as a collective group on the scene did a great job. And I just cool. Been having really good sleep since the same.
Jeff, I uh uh, congratulations. I, I heard lots of positive things. And I actually, I was somewhat surprised that we didn't uh you must have done a good job of getting the word out because I was surprised that we didn't have more people saying, what the hell is going on? But, but I, I know a little bit of your background and I believe this is the biggest uh training event you've put together, correct?
It is.
And I think, I think you did a, I give a job. Good job.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you. And, and I do have to say, you know, a shout out to our cert team, our community emergency response team. I know we're trying to get that up and running again and get some, some funding for that. They did a great job. They volunteered. Again, these are volunteers. They came out on their own time the week before, I think the Monday before, and they went to Powell with flyers. They went to Powell and just to spread the word. They were at the supermarket. They walked around the neighborhood and knocked on buildings. So I think that really contributed to, okay, we had people that showed up, but they were there to watch. They knew what was going on and there wasn't any panic or any urgency. And I don't think we had any associated nine-one-one calls or any calls questioning what's going on over there. So I have to give them a shout out. They, they did a fantastic job.
It is weird when the helicopters fly over your house though, and you're going, oh, yeah, I remember now. It was a training day.
Yeah, and, and, you know, they were loud and they were, and they were present. They, I thought they were going to pop in and take off, but they they stayed in the area for quite some time. So that was.
Madam Chair, everybody that I talked to involved was just great exercise, everything. I got the one person though, just about the helicopters. Um. He didn't, and it's great to hear that cert did this because I'm going to go back to the guy and tell him because he didn't think it was advertised enough with, and, and I think what he, well, he posted a thing and I, I called him up because I know who he is. Um, but he posted, I, I don't know if it's a Cody Enterprise or Paltrib um article that had a picture of the two Blackhawks flying that they were coming to do this training. He didn't think there was much advanced notice since he lives only two miles away. And so I kind of discussed it, but now I, I'm going to go back. It's nice to know that cert was out. That was the only thing is maybe we could advertise it sooner or earlier. It's just.
And you know, again, that's on me. That's the planning thing. Um, we looked at it. We didn't want to start the, we had talked about it early on um on K O D I, I think, and just, hey, we're going to be back. We're going to talk about this. That timing issue, we didn't want to make it so far out that people forgot about it. But we also didn't want to, you know, waste time of our, our resources like the papers and that thing. So we just thought, you know, maybe two weeks out, we'll start getting on the radio. We'll start talking about it. We'll do some videos, but I do think that's the one thing that I, I agree could be better. I know we did the video with Powell Valley with their P I O, their Jim Cannon did a great job. I mean, I'm, I'm not the face of anything. You don't want me on camera, but he did a great job of making it presentable. And uh, Dr. Lowe was fantastic in getting the word out. So next time we will take that and we'll put that in the A A R that, you know, on the planning side and, you know, on my side, we need to be a little bit better about making sure people know. And that's if, if, if that's the negative takeaway from this and nothing further happened on the negative side, then that, that's okay. We will, we will take that and apologize for not getting that one out, but we'll, we'll make that better next time.
That's great.
That's great. Um, on the I D thing, would you um after you discuss it with law enforcement and figure out what the thoughts are, we talked upstairs about maybe a little bit of a committee, but with the departments that actually send our employees out in the field for the most assessors and planning and zoning and those, if we could maybe get a committee together on what that could look like or should look like um for county I D?
Yeah, agreed.
Great. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? No?
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for radios. Let me know if any are missing. They shouldn't be.
Um, we have a few minutes and then we have a break. But just before that, I need to clarify with Molly, um, who all wants to attend. She is planning on attending Waco the end of September so we can get rooms figured out. It's in Casper on the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth of September.
Put me down, but I might be iffy, changing, iffy. I'm definitely iffy.
I'm going. Lloyd's not sure yet. He'll be breathing.
I should be gone, yes.
Okay.
And James, I'll let you know.
You're planning on it though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Well, just like Friday night, we would get you. I thought I should be okay.
Okay, so I just figure on all of us then for now? Okay. Um. Um, teaching, that's just a question for later. Okay. That's it for right now. So we'll be on break for a little bit. Um. Ten thirty-five with the uh library board. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
F Y I, the uh, you're familiar a little bit with the uh uh B L M grazing revision rule. Have you been looking at the, has anybody got the emails from Mike at Christensen late last week?
On grazing?
No, I'm grazing.
I'm grazing, right, yeah. Well, I've been on that committee for two and a half years now.
So it probably just went to the committee.
Um, last Friday, we got an email from the B L M that they are discontinuing or banning of the whole kid and kaboom. And they're, they're going to pursue administrative.
Something more aggressive?
Um, basically they're going to kick us out.
So no grazing permits on the B L M?
No, there didn't. No, there did.
Outside.
We've got just a minute or well, sort of. Like having seen that'd be great. Okay, the next thing on our agenda um, is an update, basically. The Powell Library Expansion Project. It's been a little while since we touched base with the whole commission, so this is great. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Happy to do it. Okay, I wanted to share with you my, my horoscope this morning.
Uh-oh.
Yes. Said that if I want to have a great day, I need to find a group of interesting people and give a fascinating presentation.
Honest. Cool. All right.
That's what it said. So here I am, guys.
You say fascinating people?
There's a catch. There's always a catch. So, okay, um. I want to review briefly and very briefly because we don't have much time. Uh, how we reached this point in our ongoing project to try and expand the Powell Library. Uh, most of you know it all began back in two thousand and four when the commission made a choice between two decrepit buildings. Seen this that way at that time, of Cody and Powell Libraries and decided to go ahead and rebuild the Cody Library. And then do Powell after. That didn't happen because we had the two thousand and eight recession that hit just as we opened the Cody Library. So then, for the next decade, the idea sort of germinated. Until a group of Powell citizens commissioned a needs assessment. On the current building. And based on those findings, the commission eventually using money raised by a Powell group of citizens. Hired G S G architects to come up with a new building design. Their work, as you all know, was hampered by the COVID outbreak that finished last year. And you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Silver, but you, you missed this great presentation. Uh, it was a bit on the unsatisfactory side. After that, the library board made the renderings and the floor plans available. Uh, to the people of Powell, and we took them to meetings and displayed them in the library uniformly. People who looked at them were un, not, not terribly happy. Um, the appearance just doesn't look. As you've seen from the renderings yourself, much like Powell. It's, well, anyway, I won't go into criticism. That'd take too long. Uh, but we were unhappy about it. The board was unhappy. The librarians found the floor plan to be very unsatisfactory. In the meantime, we became aware of a state grant of federal money for library construction. And were advised that we had a good chance of getting a big hunk of twelve million dollars. We won't get that, but a good hunk. Given these factors, last October, the library appointed Jeff Bowman here. As a design committee chair, charged with exploring and obtaining a design and floor plan. That we thought suitable for Powell and within available existing funds, I mean, possibly available. Funds. He talked to a list of library design specialists. Um, he also talked to G S G about working with the library design specialists because we thought that was the weakness that G S G. Just had not taken into account sufficiently what was needed in the library of the present. They were, the, the G S G expressed themselves as quite willing to work with another designer. Um, when we also asked about their recommendations on reducing the proposed price tag. Which was between fourteen and eighteen million dollars, which was way out of our range. Um, they expressed uh, the possibility of doing so, but they. Um, their recommendations involve something called shelling, which is leaving rooms unfinished. And value engineering, which means reducing the. Um, price, uh, reducing the quality essentially of many of the elements. That would go into the construction of the building. Not, not safety elements, but just design elements. So now I'll let Jeff tell you about what the board. Uh, this, the library board would like to do about this, how we would like to go forward.
All right, uh, good morning. This has been quite a learning curve, uh, since I started in the uh, library board. I've learned a lot about libraries. And I'd like to, uh, start with a short quote. Uh, this is from a book, uh, uh, by Eric Kleinenberg. It's called Palaces for the People, which was what Andrew Carnegie. Uh, called libraries, palaces for the people. Libraries have adapted a new and expanding role. They have quietly become tech hubs with free Wi-Fi, computers, and expanded technical services. They offer much-needed public meeting rooms and in times of emergency. And severe weather becomes sources of information and places of shelter. Along with nurses and firefighters, libraries are among the few groups and institutions Americans continue to trust. The Cody Library has done an excellent job, uh, doing this, and we'd like to have Powell be in the same position. Um. The initial design from G S G. The initial design from GSG Architects was an important step. From then, we went on to learn that there are architectural firms that actually specialize in libraries. GSG does not. Therefore, the, the library board appointed me as the design committee. And I've had Zoom meetings with four different firms from around the country, actually. That specialize in library design and learned a lot, many things we were not aware of. Much of their concerns, and we all share this, demands for flexibility, efficiency, sustainability. Educational liability, as well as nice places to spend time. You know what it's like on a quiet afternoon and it's raining like it has been. Library is a good place to go. All of these firms were generous with their advice and gave such things as design the scope according to your budget. We kind of were doing the other way around. Reflect community history. Build a centerpiece of the community and consider the attraction for business to come to town. It's a big attract and when a business looks at a, at the library facilities, as well as the other library facilities in town, like are swimming pool. In both communities, big attraction. I talked to Johnson Architects at length and they seem to be the best fit. Ray Johnston has a small firm with long experience of building large and small facilities. I've seen pictures of all of it. It's really nice. He has built or remodeled 36 different libraries. He prepares to work with local leaders, local companies, use local materials where possible. He has expressed an interest to come for a site visit. And offers a limited contract to visit Powell with an associate to tour our library, to tour the area. Meet with community members and library board, and then he'll work up a preliminary portfolio. Initially, he said he would do this for $8,000 plus office time to develop a preliminary plan. Seemed high, but he also said he'd be willing to negotiate that. I said, well, what's your final price? And I haven't heard back on that, but we'd like to know what such a, such a site visit would cost. He would be willing to work with a design, as a design specialist with a local firm or some other architect that would be the prime. And then he would be the design firm. We also feel it would be a good idea probably to hire a project manager, the more as we go along. We feel like this is an important next step in the process. His site visits will be paid for by the foundation. And needs to be completed in time for the grant application, which is scheduled for October. So we're kind of on the move. Now, the question arose as to who needs to approve our hiring someone for this step. Board and library management see an opportunity to, to start this application product. We need to get the state money to build our library and we need to have a better idea of what we need and want. So again, I think the site plan is important. We'd like to proceed with an understanding that we will then regroup with you before reaching any decisions. Regarding a prime project architect and signing any contracts to finally secure a fine new library for Powell. So if you have questions, here we are.
I would just tell the board that this did come up as I attend their meetings and the more we had the discussion and then seeing the costs that came out. I thought that this should come before the board, just because it is our building. And if we want to have conversations about who comes in and who's looking at what, that we should know about it. So that's why we're here today, basically, although I appreciate the update completely. So. What are your thoughts? Questions?
Just a question about the October grants. You're putting that together or who's actually writing the grant?
Karen is staying on top of that and that's been kind of a moving target. They keep putting it off from November to March and now October.
It's an ARP funded grant from the state of Wyoming.
Department of Transportation is handling it. We've decided to kick it down the road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. The grant that you're going after, is it a matching grant?
No. They would just give us some money if we're lucky.
Well, with a, with a construction, a final construction.
I'm sorry.
With a final construction, we have to have an opening, we have to open by a specific time. And that specific timeline is very short. Another reason that we are very anxious to have our ducks in a row before we get the money. Because the clock will start ticking then. And we don't want to be in a situation of spending the next six months trying to get a, a final design. Before we actually put a shovel in the ground.
Also, where is, as you said, Johnson Associates or whatever, where are they?
They're out of Seattle.
Seattle.
Yeah. He's got a firm of about 15 people and mostly women, which he pointed out. And his associate is, is also a qualified architect and he wants to bring her as well. She's younger. He's nearing retirement. Which, I don't know, I got along with the guy and I got along with her. I just felt good about this.
They done an actual site visit?
Not yet. And that's kind of what we're asking for, how you feel about us inviting them to come.
I understand. And that one visit would be paid for by?
The foundation.
Okay. All good with it? Okay. I think that's a go ahead.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us posted. We'll do.
Good work on the parade, Paul.
Sign right there. You're gonna use your stamp. Did you give a stamp yet?
I did. But I just.
Thanks, Karen.
Just sign right there and hand it over to you. There's no sign here.
There's usually a lot of stickers inside of it.
Libraries, museums, or universities.
I like that.
Howdy.
So the next thing on our agenda today is Park County Historic Preservation Commission, CLG Grant slash Budget.
Hi. So sorry, we don't have any fun historical things to talk about today. We're going to talk about foreign bureaucratic administrative. So two years ago, we wrote this grant to SHPO to hire a National Register nomination writer. Who has since compiled all this information to. Write up nominations for the Sage Creek Community Club and the Home Center Museum over in Powell. So all that stuff is done. We sent it to SHPO. It will be reviewed later this fall by the National Register Nomination Committee. So now we're just trying to get people paid. So we have to pay. Mr. Rosenberg, who was the consultant to write these. And I think Amy and I had talked to you folks, was it like four or five months ago, about how we were going to handle these grants. Without Larry Todd fronting the money, his own money. So what we have to do now, every time that we have one of these grants, we have to come talk to you. And say, hey, will you front this money? And then we will get reimbursed by SHPO and we'll give that back to you.
As long as it's clean, Madam Chair.
I believe, Madam Chair, that we added a budget line for that with some strict purpose. So we can in and out, of course, we have to do an expenditure and a revenue. But I believe we've done that to move into the next fiscal year. So. We just need, I guess, an amount to put in there.
Well, the actual budget amount is, well, the, the grant was written for $10,000. The actual total budget ended up being $9,952. So we don't need to spend a lot of time about 40 on $48, whatever you want to.
I guess my other question is if there would be any others this year that you're aware of that we need to do this with. Because if we put that number in the budget and we just put the 10 or the 9,000, whatever, that's it for the year.
We don't have any other grants on the table right now.
Okay.
And even if we wrote a grant later this year, it wouldn't, like the cycle wouldn't come around until two years down the road.
Okay. All right.
So I think, I think we have 10,000 on that line item. So I think we're good.
Okay.
I mean, there's always going to be a little bit of a discrepancy and that's, that's just the way bills fall that.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as, I, I don't see an issue with it, Brian, at all.
Okay.
Okay. The board. Everything okay with doing it that way? Again, okay. We're good.
Okay.
So. How do we go about getting the money?
You need to, I would prepare something to give to the clerk's office.
All right. Why don't you go down and talk to Steve while you're in the building, Paul Meisel?
Okay.
And he'll give you the voucher process. And, and then that, you can fill out the voucher and everything, and then that money will go directly to whoever's to receive it.
Okay.
Let Steve or Michael can help you with that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? That was not too, super painful.
We like the historical ones though. Come on, you know.
Yeah. Well, did you read these? I'm sure you read.
I read it from the back. It is interesting.
They are interesting.
Well, hopefully they'll go through. So yeah, it just takes a long time to get stuff.
Needle Creek Cabin's next.
Uh, yeah. Keep me informed of any information that you get on your side.
Nothing.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is.
Executive.
Executive session, which is just with us. So we can go ahead if we have a motion for executive session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Sorry. I have a motion to go into executive session. Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
When opposed? Okay. Okay, we will move into executive session.
Aye.
When opposed? Okay. We will move into executive session.
Aye.
When opposed? Okay. We will move into executive session.
I guess it could have had more.
No, I'm taking too long. Said it take him too long to get up. I don't want to watch that. It makes me hurt. Okay. Out of executive session and back into regular session? Any action?
Madam Chair, move. We approved the recommendation decided during executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve recommendations made during executive session. Any further discussion? Are you none of those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. One thing that's come up today on the, sorry. One thing that came up through a phone call to Molly earlier today, and we're gonna kind of run out of time since we're not having any action next Tuesday. The, the people with the Winchester Gun Show have asked permission again to put their sandwich board on the lawn at the complex property as you come around the corner on Stampede to advertise the Winchester Gun Show from July fourteen to sixteen on that weekend. Apparently, we did it a year or two ago, a year ago. Does anybody have a problem with their sandwich board being on?
No, Madam Chair, I look at them as administrative.
Just wanna make sure you're okay.
And the sandwiches are they selling?
Yeah.
It's a term commissioner. All right, you can tell them, okay. No, he just likes to heckle. Okay. So Brian Edwards should be here in a minute. He remembers. We go. By the fact of occasion, just to let you know, on the town, Matiti is looking at the ways that they can figure out a permanent, more permanent solution for funding the T C swimming pool and T C community facilities, Joint Powers Board. So they're having discussions and I was gonna talk to Attorney Scorick about correspondence with them about, they're talking about whether they would be eligible to do a mill or not being a joint powers board. Just so you're aware, if you hear any discussion that that might be something that they're looking at. I'm pretty sure it would have to come to us to be allowed to be on the ballot if they choose to, to go for that. But just so you're aware, if you hear the discussion. There he comes. Okay, the next thing on our agenda, Brian Edwards, Park County Engineer, Local Government, ARPA Grant, and I believe this is for the Lagoons.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. As the commissioners will remember, we applied jointly with the City of Cody to the Wyoming State Office, the State Lands and Investments. We actually applied once and didn't get funding. We applied again and it was granted funding through the State ARPA Grant Program. And but thanks to Commissioner Livingston. We were successful in getting that grant and I guess what's before you today is we received the grant agreement from State Loan and Investment Board, total estimated project cost for the sewer lagoons consolidation and receiving stations is around four million dollars, of which two million of that's from the State ARPA funds. And the county agreed to match that with two million local ARPA money. So that's what this agreement basically acknowledges. We've got to use the money before two thousand twenty-six and SLIV has indicated that they would like for the county to, and the city to utilize this money before we use any other money. So they really want to see it administered and spent. So we're working now with City Cody on the project to get you know, an engineer on board and then to basically get going on that. We're working on a draft memorandum of agreement between the county and city. And once we get that in place, we'll be working on design for a while.
Have you seen the draft of that yet?
I have not. We may want to work on that a little bit, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the city, I think, was gonna take the first crack at that. And then we're gonna work on the statement of qualifications, the request for qualifications for the engineer. Other than that, again, I have an agreement. This has been reviewed by the county attorney. And he said it was acceptable to him in form. And he had no objections. So it's pretty much a standard state agreement. But that's what we got.
Any questions from the board?
You laid your back out.
Just hope the price don't keep going up.
Absolutely. I don't, Madam Chair. And I know twenty-six seems like a long time, but if you see any possible problems, I mean, it has to be spent.
Spent by twenty-six.
Basically done by
That's, that's my understanding.
And I, one thing I've learned in five and a half years is shit doesn't get done real fast.
I, I think it is just there.
Their two million needs to be spent by twenty-six. So that'd be half the project. Yeah, we may still.
Well, that's true. The, these funds here have to be spent by two thousand twenty-six.
So if we use, then we use theirs first. So there may be some beyond, but we would be able to pay for that out of our general that we budgeted for through our own ARPA.
Did he do that in the general or did we do it in our ARPA?
I thought we did it.
You did it. Oh, I thought you did it in your ARPA.
Well, ARPA general.
Oh, ARPA general. Yeah, ARPA general.
We'll look, we're on that. We're on that next. We'll look at that, see where it goes.
I mean, I'm just, it's.
Yeah, I can't remember which one, but yeah, one of those.
We tried to deplete it, my.
Well, we did the HVAC.
My question is.
It, I think we should have plenty of time, but we need to stay moving on this.
Madam Chair, looking at the ARPA grant funding tracking sheet here, it shows that we've got the two million allocated. No, it says requested, I'm sorry.
In which one, though? The general or the COVID?
Should say it on the top of the spreadsheet. Are you in the general or the COBA?
Doesn't say either one.
It's like a tab.
That one is the when we start out in COVID five point six.
Five point six is COVID money.
So that's COVID.
Then it has to be spent by
I'm just.
No, you're right.
Yeah, that's it'll, we'll have to stay at it. Get it done, but I, I think it's plenty of time. Gotta get her going. Need to be building next summer.
You always. I'm sure we take the sewer lagoons out of the COVID and put it in the general and put all of the HVAC in the COVID.
I show, I show that the sewer lagoons are in the, in the twelve, which is the general.
That's what I remembered as well. The HVAC was out of the.
HVAC's in the, in the, in the COVID.
Yeah, once I flipped it up, I see that.
Okay, yeah. So we're okay. As far as the dollars, the general does not have to be spent by twenty-six.
So many chairs, this requires action.
Yes.
We're saving your turn. They're gonna let me?
It's your project.
I'm not doing it.
Madam Chair. I move to approve, is it what I'm stating is correct, local government, ARPA grant award. The agreement.
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 Yeah.
Certification agreement.
Yep.
Chair.
Land investment.
And allow the chair to sign.
Allow the chair to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant paperwork with the SLIV board for the lagoon project as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye, aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe's project. That was yours.
Well.
Cause I had to go down there and rebel for the oh, that's Brian.
He's the only one that was in Cheyenne that day.
And soon to be Livingston class.
Ryan, I do think we should try to go like sprint out of the start on this one.
I don't disagree with that.
I, I'll touch base with the mayor again, cause I talked to him almost a month ago about that draft agreement and we haven't seen it yet. So I'll push that. Yeah.
Talking on your part would be.
I know some you can use for leverage.
Okay.
You want both?
Okay. Those are done. Okay. Where are we at? Plus, this is just us, pretty much. We didn't expect Barbara or anybody else up to finish this discussion, did we? Okay. This is one thing that, that Steve brought up in talking about the, the ARP money, which is the next thing on our agenda, funds discussion. There are a few projects on here that we believe are basically done. They're clarifying that with the department heads to make sure. And there could be a couple thousand here and a couple thousand there that are not going to be spent on that project because it's been completed. I don't know about your gravel yet, but I do know on a couple of the other things, they're done. So some of that money rotates back in. And we wondered with the additional funds that it looks like the HVAC is going to take, wondered about going ahead and just committing any dollars left in the COVID original twenty twenty ARPA funds be designated to the HVAC system. Without, we don't have to use a dollar figure at this time. I just think anything left in this account after the existing projects would go toward HVAC.
Yep.
You need in form.
Let's do that, just to be sure we're all on the same page for getting this.
You still want to call it, no, ARPA. COVID ARPA.
You could call it COARPA or you can call it ARPA twenty twenty, because it's the first one that we got.
Madam Chair. I move to appropriate all remaining funds from the ARPA COVID twenty twenty grant to be tagged for the HVAC system moving forward. What?
I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Okay.
And, and do we need to put anything in there? Any unencumbered? Because we've encumbered some of this stuff for specific projects and it hasn't been spent yet. So technically, you're saying anything that hasn't been spent yet would go forward.
Anything that hasn't been allocated.
Allocated or covered, however. That's all I would, that's the only way.
Big word for me. Can you have that, Colleen?
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Well, what I was thinking about is if there's something on here that, that yes, we need to go ahead and let them do what we said they would do. But if they end up with the remaining two or three thousand, is that still gonna sit there? Or, because you're saying don't use any more than, I mean, leave what's allocated, allocated. If they don't use all of their allocation, we want the rest of it back.
Right.
So that's what I'm trying to word, so yes.
The motion, he said, was move to appropriate, which means move
Right.
all remaining ARPA covered twenty twenty grants that are not that to be allocated to the HVACs. So we have everything.
But allocated is different than spent. That are not required under the.
So we're trying to do, all we're trying to clean up is, is it, and I can't, I can't, but if we have a project that
City of voting booths.
Yeah, that hasn't been, that hasn't been spent.
Right.
Do we set a date on it? Do we just, all I'm trying to do is say anything left over.
Right, right.
Any allocated funds that have been unused.
Right.
You're not doing the allocated fund.
There you go. There you go.
That's better. Yeah. That's all I can.
Unused allocated funds, yes, yeah.
Otherwise, we're gonna come in and take all your money.
Okay.
Remaining and unused allocated funds.
So can you repeat that?
Everybody on?
Madam Chair, also a question about, for instance, like the sheriff radios, there's still two grand remaining for the sewer. Over in the TC, there's still a few thousand dollars remaining. Do they stay there or can they move back in? I mean, if the sheriff's department says, oh, we're still gonna order maybe one more radio or two more radios. Do we give them a timeframe for them to use these? For instance, you know, Matiti, their sewer project, they had over eight thousand left over.
They're not quite done yet. There's still another invoice to come in from them. So that project isn't done. I just think what we're, what we're doing is protecting the funds that may be left in this account.
Right.
Any funds that are left.
But there may be some more funds that are still available.
Right.
The sheriff's department went, you know, they underbid, so.
Well, the voting, voting booths came in less than we allocated too. So there will be extras in some of those line items. And when the project, and I guess Molly and I talked about how to chase this. If we've talked to Colleen and what we allocated for her and we're done and that invoice is done, I think Steve can move that extra money back into unallocated. Because.
Which is now allocated.
Well, it is now.
Or will be.
Right. Does that make sense? Does that finish? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Which you all understand.
Can you read it back?
It's a bad. Commissioner will move to appropriate allocated funds unused to be reallocated to the HVAC system of the ARPA COVID, oh, my, so COVID, right? COVID twenty twenty.
Yes, but it's, it's unused and all remaining.
Right.
Yeah.
Any unused allocated. Also, I, because there's, I believe there's somewhere around seventy thousand is.
That we hadn't done.
So I want to use that plus any unused already allocated funds.
Allocated and other allocated funds.
Right. Allocated and unallocated.
Spend it all.
Think you got it now? Okay, Scott, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye, aye. Aye.
No opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. We're on lunch.
Okay.
I think so.
I love those, it's been all the time getting done.
Oh, did you get them, Brian? Okay, see you.
Real good. Yeah.
Where he doesn't have to walk real far.
My wife's gonna get me. Yeah, she was, well, I think.[402.78]
Personnel manual, no, it's on the website. It's own, it's its own policy.
Okay, it's one fifteen if everybody's ready. The next thing on our agenda today is the updated personnel policy. Elected officials and department heads worked through this along with the county attorney's advice. And Colleen can explain the changes that are requested.
And Mallory worked really hard with us on all of this, so the major changes. We are asking for is the first one is to allow December twenty fourth and twenty fifth. Full day holidays instead of a half a day on the twenty fourth. With clarification in the manual, but if the twenty fourth falls on a Saturday, it will not be recognized on Friday.
Saturday or Sunday.
Yes, it's not recognized. It's not recognized. Okay, the second ma- major update was. If we were choosing, so we were asking that we go to PTO for new like new employees hired after July one. Instead of our sick and vacation, we would go to PTO. So in order to do that, after visiting with everyone, they were, they. We put in the option where an employee, if they have three hundred and twenty hours accumulated sick leave. Could request that they turn in five of those days to be three vacation days. But they have to have over three twenty on the book. And I don't have pages on my version here, so I'm not sure exactly what page that's on. And then.
Twenty six, okay.
Okay, and then the next was adding the part county pay time off policy. Which we're requesting that it begin July one of two thousand and twenty three. Anyone hired, and there's a chart there showing how many days they would get. And then gave an example of a couple different things with the help of Mallory. If an employee, he has only been employed by Park County for the last forty five days. However, he has been an exceptional employee. So we've just put in a few things, we don't want to harm anyone in case for some reason they would have to. They would have a life changing, like a have a surgery or something. We tried to look so they could be able to use some of their days even though they had it. And then we put in for those people, since they won't get a bank of sick leave, they can't put into their bank of sick leave. Here we put in an extensive illness bank for those on PTO. Which we would automatically put in three days of sick leave in a bank. And what that helps them do is we don't offer. We don't offer, oh gosh.
Long term disability?
Yes, short or long term disability. So putting those three days in five years, they would almost have enough accumulated in there for FMLA Medical Leave Act. But they can't use it for anything else. It's only for a family medical leave act.
One of the things we were trying to accomplish in making the change between. Our current sick and vacation policies and the PTO, number one is the. Responsibility on the department heads or elected officials on the whole three days off, need a doctor's note type of stuff, which takes that out of the picture. They just have so many days off a year, however they use them. The other is the payout at the end. We were looking for something that would maybe alleviate a little bit of the weight on the county as far as. People that leave and have a whole lot of stuff sitting there that has to be reimbursed for. In this case, once everybody is on PTO, that'll be less of an effect to the county than it currently is.
Oh, we did add the whistle lower policy. We took that, it's not in yellow because I took it right out of. Ryan Score's victim witness policy, so he'd already approved that, so I, I, my failure to make sure that that was.
It's on page thirty three?
Yes. Because I don't believe our prior policy had that. And those are major changes.
What about this one? Page five, processing employees.
Oh, that was just to clean it up a little. We have, you know, when, when someone is terminated from the county. That department head or elected official can mark on their termination sheet. Or if they retire or what they're, when they. That department head or elected official is entitled to mark whether that person should be able to be rehired.
Right.
So we're asking that they check with payroll. To see if, we've had several employees that according to their elected head or department should not have been rehired into that. So it's just to have a department look, look into payroll to see if there's a reason for someone not to be rehired.
So I throw this out, and I don't know, I'm just gonna go back a year. So if I'm gonna hire a deputy. So if I'm gonna hire a deputy, he flies in from Virginia and we interview him and I want to offer the job right there, I would have to wait?
No, no, is somebody like that? No, it's like a.
That's what I'm saying, it's too broad.
Oh. Broad, maybe we. When an individual is being considered for hire, the department head or supervisor must contact the force office before extending an offer of employment to a new employee.
Maybe it should be for rehire, rehire to the county.
You just add the word rehire.
I'm just thinking of, had that when they fly in and here it is.
Right, yeah. Right.
No, I mean, so rehire would be.
Well, I would just put in an employee formerly employed by
or formerly.
Formerly employed by Park County.
Yeah.
Or a person, because they're no longer an employee.
Right.
Any person formerly employed by Park County.
Yeah, when an individual formerly employed by Park County is being considered, yeah, so it's easy to.
Perfect, okay. Did you see anything else?
Well, there's one part to me, it was a little confusing, but that's me too. And maybe it's just the way, I, I, I did beggy size my screen now, so maybe I'll read it right.
Is Mr. Skoric of the opinion that everyone needs to re-sign for this policy manual again? Have we updated? Can we do that signature and? No, we can't, because they don't sign the the wage change sheets, okay.
So when this is printed, each, it'll be in the back of every policy manual, then we'll give each employee or each department head.
Enough.
Enough for each, each employee to sign on.
Okay.
That's the very last page.
Madam Chair, we're gonna print print one of these for each, each employee and have them sign them.
Yes.
And we just have them, you put it online and have them know that they've read it online and have the signature sheet.
We can do that.
I'm just trying to.
That saves a lot of paper.
A lot of paper.
Yeah. They always print for new employees.
Well, that's understandable, but.
But yeah, for everybody else, we could just have them send, I can send to all mailboxes and this is your new personnel policy manual. After you've finished reading it, please get every department head or elected official to sign that acknowledgement form and return the payroll part.
Yep.
Okay.
And we'll give them to like, um, August fifteenth. August, whatever.
Whatever works for you as far as getting them all back.
Because they'll be put in their employee packets.
Anybody see anything else that you're questioning or want to?
Madam Chair, the one thing I was looking at is on twenty-nine. There's kind of a side note of, we're wondering if it should be eighty, forty or eighty hours.
What, what?
Oh. Roll over. I, I thought the discussion was forty. I'm not sure where the eighty is coming from in the comment.
Still on the PTO.
Yeah. Go toward the it, it's eight point one one, I think. Yeah, eight point one one toward the end of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it will be allowed to roll over to forty hours. They're like, PTO to be used no later than December thirty-first.
Right, there's a comment that asks, I wonder if this should be forty hours or eighty hours for those people that have a vacation scheduled in January or February.
Well, they'll already have all.
They're all new coming.
Yeah, and they'll get their new, they'll get their already approved, so I would say forty.
That's the discussion we had.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't realize it was still come up there.
Okay. So any other questions or concerns from the board?
And Chair, I move that we approve the updated personnel policy as presented. Second.
The movement seconded to approve the updated Park County Personnel Policy Manual as presented. Do you have any further discussion? Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? No, okay, motion passes. Thanks for the work, Colleen. Okay. One thirty is again an executive session. Should take ten or fifteen minutes.
Move to an executive session, Madam Chair.
Second.
They moved and seconded to go into executive session. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay. So ten or fifteen minutes, we should be back on our last agenda item.
Do you want the budget up there?
It's up to you. If that's the easiest way for you to go over it, whatever you want to do.
You know, there's really nothing more in detail to go over too much.
Okay.
Just as what you wanted to. You just want update or?
Yeah, why don't you? Yeah, why don't you give us an update on the things that have come up in the last couple of weeks?
Um. But I think the biggest update is Trevor and I sat down and we went through a lot more of the. What the building kind of needed. And we added some capital items like replacing the boilers and the L E C. And. Oh, some equipment that's makes sense crack sealers. Two crack sealers for ten thousand dollars versus paying twenty thousand to have somebody do one parking lot. Um, just some kind of efficient things that he came up with.
Think you and I also had a conversation about the I T in here that we wanted to operate a little bit to see if that can be included in what we're doing after the H V A C thing to get. To get this solved.
Okay.
We'll go back to the crack seat. Yeah, ceiling machine.
Yeah, because of the the machine that comes with the elastic that goes down into it melts it.
Yeah.
And then you walk. Simple, easy peasy. So I found a bid. Uh, I think it was two thousand nineteen, it was around ten thousand to do. Uh, one of our facilities and I thought I can get two of them for. You know, ten thousand, so that would pay for itself in one in one shot, so.
Did you include the? The rods? That seals it?
Yeah, yeah, they come in blocks and that comes on a pallet with this. It's a package deal essentially you buy.
I just worry about. Kind of like our box sniffing thing. When we have venues out there that do this.
Yeah.
Um, do we have the time and then are we gonna be? I'm not, I I guess I am questioning a little bit.
Absolutely.
I mean, are we going to have upkeep maintenance? Um. It costs more than just a machine.
Yeah. But we're already here, so I, you know, I'm just.
But we only do it about every seven years.
Yep.
It's worth owning it.
Yep. And then when seven years comes up, we're owned, it's all paid for.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna do it on the side. Although I did think about the guy and I watched a few videos and they're. They make a ton of money, like two bucks a foot for a crack ceiling. No, that's not.
Go ahead. We just kind of summary, we've updated a lot of personnel stuff for changes and. Um, all the increases are included. And with a few changes, which I'll have a list of everything that I've changed for you guys to go over and approve by next week. But right now we're sitting. With about an excess of around three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but with the increased. Uh, cost in the HVAC. And we still don't know about the second funds for ARPA. Our thought was to put that. Extra three hundred into the general budget for the HVAC. To, because I, right now, we're, we're pretty close. To just covering the, the new estimate of the six point five. Not three hundred, three hundred to get us up to about. I think six point two or three.
With the art money plus that.
Art money plus that, yeah.
The other thing, I guess, the discussion we need to have to see where we want to put it is that dump truck. And I guess you, you talked this morning about where you would use it. With the. Enterprise fund with the landfill, of course, they. We need to do that monetary switch of some kind, so um, their, their desire is twenty thousand dollars, which they believe they can get through the auction side of it. Although we have the buildings and grounds that thinks they can use it for and save time on projects for ourselves that are over at the fairgrounds. What are your thoughts? Do we? Can we do that? Do we wait and see what comes on an auction? What do you want to do?
I definitely think we should at least wait for the, with the auction. See what comes. Truthfully, you, you, I believe if you are in need, need of a dump truck. A single. Sorry, but. A single action six yard. A lot more. Usable friendly for you.
Yeah, we have one right now.
You do?
Yeah, we have a small.
Why do you need a twelve?
It's only eight by maybe ten.
Yeah.
So instead of taking twenty trips to the dump, you'd take five, probably.
What are you loading it with? Bobcat?
Newer and.
Yeah.
All that other stuff.
Does that mean a bobcat, right? Skid steer?
Yeah, or we've got our tractor, it's got a loader as well, it's taller, that's what I thought would make better sense in loading. Because you'd be, you'd have it all back on you, I think. With that bobcat.
If you have a lot of hauling, can't we get Roden Bridge to?
I've never asked. I don't know, Lloyd, I don't know how that works, sir. I didn't know we could do that. Get more there, think about time, I don't know.
I don't know about their time, you can probably ask.
This would, this isn't just. Fair, it would be more, it'd be pretty much year round, hauling dirt around, road base, things like that is what is garbage. Stuff that's stacked up pretty fast.
If we do the auction thing, can, is that something that if you put a minimum and you don't get it, we still own it, right? So it's not like we have to sell to the lowest bidder.
We've already put a minimum on.
Well, we did on that first deal, but I mean, if we go through the. Like the muscle auction thing or whatever they were talking about, you can still put a minimum, okay, okay.
I would say at the least we let the, the consignment auction go.
First?
Go first and see. I mean, if you want, you're asking, should they? Can, is your budget allowing more than twenty thousand right now for that truck?
No.
We didn't put anything in his budget for that truck, that's why we're discussing.
We don't get minimum, then we'll go back to this.
Okay, except we won't have the money in that budget unless we set some aside for it, because. We're doing the budget now, and that's why I asked about the twenty thousand, because if it's not there, and even if we decide not to sell it because our minimum bid is ten. Where are we gonna find the twenty that the landfill needs?
We, we could put it in the budget and if it doesn't go, then we could look at it.
Okay.
At an alternative, maybe to. Buy them a bigger dump trailers and.
Are you all okay with that? If we put it in? Numbers wise, and then we'll see how it sells through the auction if we can get rid of it.
And, and I do have, I have a bigger, uh. Dump trailer, I should say, but it's a. The only truck that pulls its transmissions going out in it too, so we, you know, I need. You can't, you have to let it run for probably an hour to let the transmission warm up enough to even move the trailer, so. That would be one, you know, you could pay. Maybe you could get a truck for twenty and then haul that trailer with it or, so it just seemed like a package deal kind of.
Well, let's see, sounds like.
There's also air brake. Trucks, and we have to. We'll always have to have someone with a C D on.
Yeah, there's three of us in my department, so. That should be covered. Uh. Mark just received his class A license about a month ago.
Well, it sounds like we'll just put the money in there and see what happens, not spend it unless we figure out that's what we need, we need to do. Okay?
That's fair, that sounds pretty good. Stick with that twenty in because we've looked at prices and that's about right there.
That is reasonable, okay. Right? It works, it works.
I will all have a detailed list of. Every budget adjustment down to a hundred dollars. Uh, we had a few little run rate.
Postage?
Yep, postage is, is going up another three cents in July. So I bumped that up another fifteen thousand dollars, kind of based on what we do.
Yeah. Yep.
There's just a few little. Uh, we bumped up, we're asking to bump up the Roden Bridge roof to seventy thousand, won't cover it. It's more like a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty.
Sneak it down.
Yes.
Do it, and that'll work in with the HVAC. System to get that done. Then just a few little, just a little tweaks in some of the departments, um, but I'll have a detailed list for you by the. First part of next week.
Okay. We'll kind of have a proposed budget for advertising by next week.
Well, we kind of already have.
Yeah.
It should be printed on the eleven.
Okay.
To print some days ahead. So that's already been put in place and, you know, I mean, we stay right in there that this is just.
Change on the seventeenth or the eighteenth.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll. Kind of added a lot of things into the budget just so that it's out there.
Okay.
And to show a. What the, what a balanced budget would be.
Okay.
But all those can be adjusted. Or moved or so forth.
Yeah, once he completes that, then he'll get it on our website.
Okay. Were there individual departments that had postage in their stuff too, or just on the general?
True.
Okay. Just want to be sure we weren't missing something on there. Okay, thank you. Anything else you can think of that's come to mind since we had all the original budget discussions? Yes, sir.
The original budget that it have included the all across every employee. Um. The coal and three step.
The value is in the budgets.
Value is in.
Values in the budgets, it may all, all be used, but it's all in the budget.
The actual will be. Just carrying.
He'll know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we know the actual carryover and with the actual carryover in. And. All of the changes that we've had kind of come up with so far. We're still about three hundred thousand. Okay.
Okay, any other questions in today? All right, thank you. Cover your list, hopefully it'll go down next year rather than.
We're trying.
I know you are, thank you.
Well, Trevor did a good job, he got through, tried to find everything that we.
So approximately, what is the big number? Twenty nine?
It's right in there. Government's expensive, Lloyd.
But some of those costs, while you remember, won't be in next year's, I mean, we're not gonna have six million for H R. Next year.
We hope.
We need to explain that to the public.
Exactly.
Sometimes when we rate and put things off, it costs as big in, in one year, but it will go back down once we get these things.
And I think that definitely needs to be in the budget message, which.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, I'll make sure that's in the budget.
I've got to put in there too, we won't have Biden money either though next year.
Well, the art money.
The Biden money.
Well, we don't know. Other, we don't know about the other half.
Senator, Steve brought a, a good point out in the hallway about E B S and authority lease. So we, the commissioner signed that last week, um, they were gonna wait till their board meeting is not to sign that. But she brought the point about during the H R. With, with them moving would be not some of their rent on.
No, we're gonna continue to provide them with space, aren't we?
Are we moving them on our dollar up to complex or wherever?
I, I would have to check with Brian Edwards to see if he included them in.
Okay.
I, I don't know, this is the first.
Let's see if we're handling their move and location.
Okay.
Use their location.
Yeah, because the complex is done pretty much for people.
Sounds like it.
I don't have any more things.
Um, the other thing that I thought about is, is I T, um, with some of the discussions and stuff, I T was thinking about maybe up there, but we might want to put them in the basement of the law enforcement center. Because that room is available and they're not something that the public has to walk in and out of, so that might be easier. We'll talk to Brian and see. How that might work, because that might give us a little bit of space.
Yeah, we kind of decided for the assessor over there.
Right.
To get to the general public of easier than that location than out. Game of fish.
Right. I understand that. Okay, well, we'll continue to have those discussions, I guess.
Just a question, you said, move it where the, um, assessor?
Uh, to the complex, sorry.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, we've got a, a space up there, they've looked at and they. I guess the biggest thing would be the I T to get some. Landlines over there for them, so.
At the complex?
Yeah.
They've got their side in, so they should.
Yeah, they're, they're all over the building, but I'm not sure if they're in that corner.
Okay. I probably need to look at that sooner rather than later. Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Move to adjourn, my chair.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn for today. Any discussion? We've done all those endeavor. Thanks.